Yeah, but that still reads.
The largest benefit.
It also said really all the.
But anyway.
Yeah.
Because that's what I've been asking.
All right, good afternoon. It's 4:00 PM, Tuesday, March 19th. This is Special City Council Workshop, Fiscal 25 Budget Workshop. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Nicole, you want to do a quick roll call, please?
Councilmember Campson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Boghossian?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a call?
Thank you. So, purpose of our meeting is discussion of fiscal 25 budget. This is in the agenda as well, but we will review revenue and expenditure assumptions at a high level. We'll look at revenue and expense by department and by fund. We'll review our -- most of those are over 50 or 100,000, so really our bigger ticket items. We'll discuss revenue increase and expense reduction opportunities. We will look at, ask for additional projects or other initiatives to consider, and then talk about next steps. So I know for some of our couple of new members, some of this may be a tad confusing, the way funds work and the way we transfer funds, and even for those returning, it may be a good review. Creating a budget for the city is primary task, certainly for council, so this is important meeting. Jimmy, thank you. So Deborah, thank you for the work to date. Desiree, department heads, thank you all for getting us to this point. A lot of work has gone into this budget document to get us to the first draft. So, real quick, at a really high level, and on page one of your budget document is a revenue and expense summary by fund. So it rolls up the entire 70-plus-page document into one page, so it'll give you a quick snapshot of revenue and expense at a fund level. So again, just starting at the highest level, from a revenue standpoint, our general fund, fiscal '24 forecast, and our fiscal '25 budget is based on the last 12-month actual receipts, with a couple of exceptions. Business licenses are estimated at 90% of the last 12 months. Building permits are estimated at 85% of the last 12-month actual, and local option sales tax is estimated at 95% of the last 12-month actual. Again, think about the couple of years we're coming off of from a revenue standpoint. So, just from a conservative budget standpoint, it felt reasonable to target those numbers from a receipt standpoint. So again, 90% for business license, 85% for building permits, and 95% for local option sales tax. Tourism funds, again, those are muni ATACs, state ATACs, hospitality and beach preservation. We're estimating, what's built in this first draft, is 90% of the last 12-month of actual collections. So again, fairly conservative, but coming off some pretty record years over the last two years. So, then on the expense side, we're assuming full staffing in all departments, with the exception of the police, and that's at 95% staffing. We have built-in assuming of 3% merit and step-based adjustments effective 1-1 of 25. Our insurance costs, this is not an assumption, this is real life unfortunately, has increased about 24%, and that's our general liability, property, insurance, our docs, anything that the city owns. Our insurance costs are up about 24%. I know we're all feeling that personally too, if not more than that, from your residents' standpoint. And insurance cost is one of the items we'll look at in a minute from a potential review of maybe a different way to do some insurance coverage. Health insurance for our employees is up 11.8%. We don't have the modifier yet. Last year, that was 9.8%. So again, pretty hefty increase again this year. So transfers in from tourism funds, and this is for coming from different tourism funds to pay for personnel costs. So going from tourism funds to the general fund is 2.4 million. Last year was about $1,005,000. We talked in one of our workshops a month or so ago about increasing that number to cover more of our personnel costs out of tourism money. So again, those positions are STR Coordinator, Code Enforcement Officer, two CDL drivers, 50% of the Fire Inspector, two firefighters, and two police officers. So that makes up the 2.4 million rough numbers. Go ahead.
Those are the additional positions that we are now covering with tourism funds.
With tourism, that increases a million dollar roughly.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then at the end of the year, with all these assumptions built in, we're assuming we're going to have a transfer out from the general fund. For lack of better terms, this is really the surplus we're going to have our revenue over expenses, which will be transferred at this point. We've just got to plug in at the Capital Projects Fund of 1.2 million. Okay? So all those assumptions built in, on the revenue and expense side, transfer from the tourism funds at the end of our fiscal year, we're estimating we'll have a surplus of 1.2 million. Questions there on any of the revenue or expense assumptions at this point? So again, just by way of review, the transfer in from the tourism funds for funds, again. So in one big budget document, our key budget initiatives page shows you where everything, how everything's being paid for and the source of funds. All right, so real quick, just a little bit different revenue standpoint, fiscal 25 budget revenue, you can see the year we forecast in. So you'll see the fiscal '24 budget is 26-4. Our forecast is 28-2, and then our '25 budget revenue, we just said 27-4. So a million dollar increase from a revenue over-year standpoint, from a forecast standpoint. It's a little bit difficult to see, but it's in your document. Again, at a really high level, from a revenue standpoint, we've given it to you by percentage. So you can see property taxes about 19%, permit, license, and fees about 21%, accommodations taxes about 21%, hospitality about 5%, grant income makes up about 7% of our fiscal '25 budget. So that's money in. Money out from the expense side, again, at a very high level, wages, temp labor, benefits about 41%. Capital projects about 21% this particular year. Debt service about 4%, very manageable debt service, and you can see all the other numbers there. So again, this is on.
Just a quick question on the previous one. The beach maintenance, does that include all of the work that we're doing now with scraping and restoration?
This is fiscal '25 budget. This is nothing that's going on right now. This is what we're projecting for next year.
Okay, would that be part of that budget then, any kind of?
So, I can answer. The beach maintenance piece will include the about $400,000 that we're estimating the city's scope of the beneficial use project with the Army Corps of Engineers. We're estimating $400,000 there. About $375,000 associated with the city's portion for a future shore management project up in Wild Dunes. And this fund also includes improvements to beach access and the addition of boardwalks, with some of that is being offset by grant money. But that is what is included in that number, those two big projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, and some of that's here, Jan. So this key budget initiative by department, this is on page four of your big budget document, and we'll show you the funding source for each one of these. We just rolled it up here, just identifying the bigger ticket items that we have. So just real quick to walk through these, because we'll have a conversation later about timing and such. So general government, city hall renovation slash expansion, estimated cost is 4 million, split between fiscal '25 and fiscal '26. And again, you can see in your budget document, page four, how we're paying for that in each one of these items. Next item is resurfacing city-owned portion of Ocean Boulevard, $170,000. Police and Fire Department, Public Safety Building and Fire Station 2 access control system, about $190,000, split between Fire and Police, at the Public Safety Building anyway. Next, Public Safety Building Training Room IT upgrades, about $35,000, split between Fire and Police. Police drone, $23,000. Fire Department Rescue Boat, we have a grant for a portion of this, so the city's portion is $300,000. Would be our commitment to that number.
We'll be applying for that grant. We have not yet received it. But if we receive it, the city's portion would be about $300,000.
And this next item's actually a fiscal '26 budget item, fiscal Fire Department Rescue Truck of 2.5 million. Public Works Department, shift to a side loader garbage collection system. So we'd have to transition all of the carts that we have. So we have $100,000 in the next three fiscal years to replace all of those can, garbage cans. Drainage, Waterway Boulevard Path, elevation project, 1.5 million. We're hoping to hear maybe any day now on a FEMA grant that would cover 75% of the original 1.1 million dollar cost estimate for this project.
That should say 90%?
90%.
Yes, of the 1.1 million.
Not 75.
Not 75, my apologies.
75 with a total new, roughly?
Roughly.
But just to be clear in the budget, the full amount in there. So there's a benefit once we get to the budget numbers when we get that grant.
Correct.
That's right.
We're budgeting the entire expense.
Next is Phase 5 Drainage on Palm Boulevard between 38th and 41st Avenue. For this current fiscal year, we've just got to have the design and permitting of 250,000 for that particular A mini excavator for stormwater maintenance, 50,000. Rec Department Playground Equipment and Rubber Pour In Place Flooring, 500,000. So it's a complete replacement of the playground equipment there. Painting the building for 50,000. High tide room floor replacement for 32,000. So Jan, here to your specific question earlier, here's the beach maintenance piece that's in there. The Army Corps Beneficial Use Project at Breach Inlet, our city's portion is 400,000. Shore Management Project in Wild Dunes, 190,000. Large offshore projects permitting, 365,000. Two new ADA boardwalks, 500,000. And again, we've got a state budget for that particular item. An annual beach monitoring for 60,000. The Marina, Public Green Space, and Parking Lot reconfiguration of 300,000.
May I ask a question?
Yes, fire away.
Is that beach monitoring our current schedule, or is that anticipating kind of a stepped-up level of monitoring that we've kind of been kicking around?
That just includes the one annual monitoring and surveying a year. If we do more, we would have to add to that.
Yeah. And to Elizabeth's question, at the ad hoc beach maintenance meetings, we've talked about doing more and different, but at this point, we just got that one $60,000 number in.
Has that been sufficient? I mean, because we've certainly used them a lot more this year. Has what we budgeted been enough for what we've needed?
Council has approved some amendments to that original agreement, particularly because of the emergency work that we've been doing at Breach Inlet and to cover the coordination and engineering associated with the permitting for the beneficial use project. The $365,000 permitting that council approved last year, so that's just going to be, there's some carryover for FY '25. There's some expense this year. You know, I think that based on the recommendations that we developed with the ad hoc committee, if we need to have more monitoring and more surveying more frequently, I think particularly in the inlet, unstable inlet zones, we would like to do that. We'd have to get a number from Stephen and then include it in the budget. But at this point.
So far, the extra we've been doing has been included in the, like, the amount we've paid out for the scraping and all that. That's all been all inclusive.
And Katie, to your question specifically, this is just for the monitoring piece of it? You know, the work that, you know, CSE's been here so much in the last six, eight, 10 months. I mean, that's kind of a different line item, if you will, from a consulting, professional services standpoint.
That covers the annual report we get from them.
The Marina, Public Green Space, and Parking Lot reconfiguration, 300,000, and the extension of the T Dock Finger Piers of 166,000. So again, those are detailed in your budget document, how we're paying for them. And again, those are really, really the bigger ticket items outside of our ongoing costs and maintenance. So just a visual from a fund balance standpoint, here are all your tourism funds, muni ATACs, hospitality, state ATACs, and then, so you could see the green bars are the fund balance over the years. The others are the revenues in and expenses out. But, you know, the focus is particularly when we get to the next slide, is really on the green bars and how our projects and estimated projects in out years is affecting our fund balances. You can really see it on this next slide primarily. If you look at either the beach fund, we have a big expense project coming in future years. General fund stays, try to keep it roughly flat in the three to, three-ish million dollar range, three to $4 million.
Scott, just a question. So I think when we go through the packages, is the modeling such that the objective is to keep the general fund steady, I think, at the 5 million mark? And then our transfers in, transfers out, and other fund balances, I think, are basically reflecting that maintenance of that general fund, along with the revenues and expenses?
That's right. And Scott, if you look at top right corner, Capital Projects Fund, the only way that particular fund gets funded is in our transfer at the end of the year, typically our overbridge.
Out of the general fund, yeah.
And so the assumption we have in future years, and this year particularly too, I mean, we've got a lot of projects. I think this year, we have about 6 million or so in capital projects. So in our out years, again, focusing on the top right, Capital Projects Fund, we're assuming we're paying cash for everything. So we haven't done anything around debt funding, or debt servicing, or increasing. We've got some significant expenses projected in the Fire Department with some equipment replacement, some in Public Works. But again, right now, we're assuming all that is paid in cash, and you can see what's happening with our fund balance, particularly Capital Projects Fund.
I guess I'm trying to think through how we interpret a negative fund balance. I mean, the beach fund balance drops to negative $5 million and doesn't get positive again through this forecasting period. So it tells us we're, in addition to this, we're short $5 million that we're going to have to come up with that's not reflected in this plan as well.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that is particularly true. When you look at FY '27, that is when we're projecting the timing for a larger-scale offshore dredging project. These are placeholder numbers, right? Until we go out for bid and understand the exact scope, but we are estimating, you know, looking at the cost of the last project that we had, if we have to do a similar project outside of Wild Dunes, then there's no cost share arrangement like there is in Wild Dunes, where we're only covering or counting on covering about 25% of that, and that's reflected in about $3 million.
So the 17.5 million that's in there for the renourishment, is the full cost of the renourishment, or what we anticipate the city's portion of any renourishment's going to be?
It includes the full cost of a renourishment project outside of Wild Dunes, who would cover the south end of the island, and about 25% of the cost of a project in the north end.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to, I mean, for, I think for illustrative purposes and a couple of things on this chart, just for everybody's information, I think you noticed that the scales aren't all the same in the charts. But the, instead of showing negative balances, shouldn't we show the, and I know we have to use the general fund sort of as the swivel, but shouldn't we be reflecting what the overall fund balances are? Because to make that balance zero, we're going to have to take out of the ATACs funds and essentially deplete all of our other funds to get to where we need to be. I don't know that it's, I mean, reflecting negative balances on our financials, I don't know that that's really the way we should be doing.
Certainly, correct. We don't want to do that, but I think it reflects, it shows the story, that if we, if we're planning on doing large offshore projects, large beach renourishment projects, the Beach Preservation Fee Fund, it's not going to cover that. And the fund balances in the tourism funds will not be enough to cover that either.
But what I'm saying is if we showed it as a zero balance, which is, I think, as far as it can go, it can't go negative, it would reflect what it would actually have to do in order, for the other funds, in order to be able to fund it in our current model. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I don't disagree with that. But again, Scott, this is assuming too, no state money, no FEMA money at this point.
Correct.
And I know there's a lot of assumptions built around, if there's a name storm and all the pieces that we may know. But I think on this first draft, and until we get to, John, on the ad hoc beach meeting, we've been having conversations about funding and different ways and paths. And I think on the first draft, Scott, to your point, I think we just, let's just show where we think we're going to be, because now you're talking about, to your point, hitting the Capital Projects Fund, the general fund, the ATAC, I mean, the tourism funds to make up that shortfall, if you will. But again, there's an assumption there, that you're not getting any help from anywhere, and that may be real, may not be real.
I guess another way to put it, though, is it looks like the governmental funds totaled about $30 million in '26. We're showing it dropping to $13 million in '27, but really, there's almost $6 million less than that. So it's really, the funds would drop from $30 million down to about $6 million.
Correct.
In that year.
That's right. Kind of Scott's point to cover it.
Yeah, to cover. You'd have to take it someplace else. So it really is really worse than what we're showing here, if you look at the total.
Is that what you would like to see, sort of a transfer?
I mean, I'm indifferent, as long as we understand, though, that there is a negative in there. And if you want to show what fund it's really negative in, but at the end of the day, we are going to have to make up the shortfall, with the assumption that we don't get help from any kind of other funding mechanism out there.
I guess that's where, that's what, like, because I was looking at it as, well, that's just one aspect of the budget. It's not like we're, you know, literally negative. We just, we have to take the money from somewhere else. We have to move it. So I do think it would be helpful to see where, if we have somewhere to take it from, where it would be coming from. And then if not, if we're talking about having to get, you know, debt of some sort, that, I think that would be helpful to see.
Yeah, and the only fund not represented on these slides, there's about 3.5 million that sits in disaster recovery. So that's another pocket that you're not seeing here that has potential.
But that has to be like a name storm or something, or is that, is there?
Totally discretionary.
Yeah, I think, yeah, disaster.
You pull it out of there to bring it down to zero, about one vote of council.
Really? For anything? Like, we wanted to.
Anything.
Put a.
Up to council.
Playground, yes.
Yeah, it's.
Let me call it a disaster.
Well, it was disastrous.
What we've been doing in the past with that is just, it's kind of a feel-good measure by, to pass councils to let the public know that we were looking ahead and that.
Oh, so it's something that we've made, it's not, okay.
It's not funded, it's only funded by our transfers.
It's our funding, and that's just what we named it.
Right. But we can pull it at any time.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so Katie, typically, remember last year, at the end of the year, we wound up with, what, $2 million roughly over? I can't remember what the number was. We put some in capital projects, we put some in disaster recovery. It's really our 3.5 million savings account, quite honestly. Yeah, good question. Desiree, are you going to say something?
No, no, 2.2.
So Scott, kind of to your, and John, your foretelling of where we're going to be from a, from a fund standpoint, you know, there's certainly money there to do it. If we wanted to look at revenue increases, again, we just captured ideas, nothing written stone by any stretch. And for '26, we're fine. It's just kind of where you wanted, how do you want to push the balloon around in out years? So one of the things, this item two, establishing a special tax purpose district for additional beach renourishment funding, we've had some conversation in the weekly beach ad hoc meetings that we've had, and that's, again, that's the committee with a few residents and a few council members. You know, that's going to take a little while to put together, but it would at least help the shortfall with the beach renourishment fund, a potential place to have that happen. Yep.
As, going back to the top one, would it be possible, maybe, we just keep track of this, but like, what the potential opportunities max could be? So for example, on property tax increase, what's our max opportunity if we're having to pull that lever? Is that, you know, 3 mil, 700 grand? Or what is, I'm wondering if we should.
List that?
Capture that.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, capture it as we're going through this conference. It's a great, it's a good list, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing still some work related to the business license and building permits, comparing, you know, to where we are, when was the last time that we increased, and how they compare to other municipalities. So there's a little bit of work associated with some, but we can, you know, for property tax increase, if the city wanted to capture the CPI increase for the past three years, it would amount to about $785,000 in additional tax revenue to the city.
So 150 bucks a household, roughly.
So let's say a property, for example, that would equate to a property appraised at $1 million, they would be paying an additional $81 in their property taxes, if it's a 4% property.
Per million.
I'm sorry?
You said per million.
A million dollar property.
A property appraised at $1 million would be paying $81 more if they're a 4% primary resident, or 117, if, I'm sorry, 114.
For a 6%.
For a 6%, yes. So this schedule shows you in blue what they're currently paying, and in red, I'm referring, I think everybody has it in their packet, what the increase would be. But that is the maximum that we could go back, per state law. We would be able to generate about $782,000.
And then Scott, to your point on the second line item, second bullet, I don't even know if we could put a number on that one yet, because there's a fair amount of work to be done still on getting to that number, or getting to that type of arrangement, a special tax purpose district. Next item, increase, to Desiree's point, increasing business license fees or building permit fees. You know, we did some of this in the last few years. We'll do some comparison to other municipalities and have that ready for our next round of budget work. We have a number of franchise fees. We don't have them for the beach operation pieces, surfing and beach chairs and umbrellas. I don't think that's a significant number, Scott, but that's an easy one to grab, too, as far as what potential is there in the IOP Water and Sewer Commission.
What are other, what are things that we have franchise fees for?
So all utilities, all utilities pay, we're capped at 5%. The city used to charge essentially 3% and about six to eight years ago, we increased to the max of 5%. But the only utilities that do not pay a franchise fee with the city is the Water and Sewer Commission. So that is an option. It's been discussed in the past and has not been embraced by city council, because it's seen as essentially a backdoor tax to residents, because you can expect maybe the Water and Sewer Commission passing that on to the ratepayer. But that would generate about, you know, if we do 3% over their gross revenues, which last fiscal year was 7 million, you're looking at $212,000 or 350, if you, if you charge the maximum 5%.
I think it's very important to note, though, that with SCNG at the time, I guess, Dominion Energy, and the cable companies, all they did was just pass it on to the residents. And so it's not like it was a net gain of anything as far as what comes out of the resident's pocket. So there was a little bit of opposition to it, but some council members said, oh, look, we can sock it to them and get more money from franchise fees. Please turn around, put it on your bill.
Are we, are we utilizing some of that to bury our lines, though? I mean, I'm not really adverse to a fee if it's used ultimately to benefit, you know, for the purpose that you're enacting it. I mean, if we're, if we're getting hit with a utility fee, but we're also using that money to bury our lines and making our system more stable, I mean, I think people could get along with that. If you're talking about water and sewer and we're using it, I don't know what they would use it for, frankly, but I don't know.
And that was the discussion that we had a couple of years ago about the franchise fee, particularly on Water and Sewer Commission. It was in line with a discussion about the city pursuing expanding sewer, how, working with the Water and Sewer Commission to expand sewer infrastructure on the island and maybe using that as a fund. How, working with the Water and Sewer Commission to expand sewer infrastructure on the island and maybe using that as a fund to cover, um, you know, the, the part of the infrastructure costs. With Dominion Energy, they do pay a franchise fee and we do have a program where they pay fifty percent of the cost of undergrounding utility, utility lines. And we did our first project in many years last year and the second project is scheduled for this fall.
These beach operations, do we, do we have a franchise fee for photographers or is that, that's not the same thing really, or is it?
No, they are, photographers are authorized to take still photography in, on the beach for up to one hour without having to get a, uh, business license. But we don't, they don't pay anything to the city nor, you know, neither do surfing and beach chairs and umbrellas. And that's a very typical operation. Many municipalities charge a percentage of their gross to those that are allowed to operate certain, certain commercial operations on the beach.
I'd like to say something about the franchise fee that we have up there for the Water and Sewer Commission. That would caution us that we badly need sanitary sewer on the entire island that we don't have now. And showing it in our budget being used for anything but that, I think is not very wise, so.
We're not giving it anything, it's just an idea on a page right now.
Yeah, okay, just saying.
Well, you're, you're going to have to vote on that one if you want it.
And it would be up to council, I think to your point, it could go to the general fund, just like any other franchise fee, um, go, revenues go into. Or it could be assigned at a special fund restricted for, for a particular project or the expansion of sewer, whatever it is that council wants to, um, assign it to.
So Jan, to your point, you could hear market for sure, but Desiree, you want to take this next one? The management of the county product.
So the, yeah, so the NPDES program is essentially our stormwater, stormwater management program that we, um, by statute have to comply with. For many, many years, the county manages that program for the city. So, um, whenever somebody's going to build and they need to get something inspected, the county will send somebody, sign the plans and give us a copy. They, you, they pay for that program by, um, keeping a portion of the NPDES fee that every property owner pays in the property taxes. A few years ago, we went from forty-eight to seventy-two. And that was just an increase to cover additional expenses with the operation of the program. We generate about, we bill about three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars a year for, um, for that, that we get, should get for that seventy-two dollar fee. We collect about two hundred and fifty-six dollars, uh, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And the county keeps about a hundred and thirty-two thousand every year to manage the program. We've been approached by the county, they feel like, that, like the city does a lot of the work already for the management and operation of that program. And they are very interested in handing over the program to the city for us to get the entirety of the money, but, uh, manage it. We'd have to do the annual report, which we already do. And that would allow us to have full access to about four hundred thousand dollars a year in NPDES money that could be, has to, or is restricted to be used for stormwater projects, so drainage projects. So there is no cap to the fee that the city, um, essentially levies for NPDES, for the NPDES program. Our current fee is seventy-two, other communities charge a hundred and forty-four, eighty-six. So there is just variations to that. And the city would need to be using those, those dollars for drainage projects, which we have in the past. We have about a one, a million two in, um, our account so far.
I have a question.
Yeah, let me just real quick, so Desiree, to wrap all that up, if we stayed at the seventy-two dollars to the city would be about a hundred and thirty or forty thousand dollars extra revenue.
Correct. We, there, there would be an expense to the city with managing the program, but we don't believe that we, that it would amount to a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Jan, go ahead.
And my question is, what services do we get from the county now that we would be taking on? Do they have an engineer that comes out and, or that reviews all the plans and certifies them or that they're?
Inspectors. They have inspectors that go and verify on the field. They run, I think last year they, they, um, ran about twenty-four permits for us. So it's not, it is not that much. And that's all, that's, that's connected to the construction activity, which in the past year, we've seen that decline. So it just depends.
So we could use our, our stormwater consultant to possibly do that workforce in the future?
Yeah, it would be up to us to manage it in the, in the most efficient way. I think that the point that we, you know, want to make is we believe that we can be more efficient than what the county is doing for the amount of money that we're paying the county to manage it for.
I'm just concerned that there's been, um, that the storm, there's, there's been statements made, I guess, that the stormwater runoff from new houses is not being managed properly. And is ending up in the public right of way rather than on their land because it isn't being monitored, so.
I mean, not to get into that rabbit hole, but the, the, the city request that requires, uh, property owners to provide a certified, uh, plan.
Yeah.
Certified by an engineer for that. So it's the.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, we need to review the plan that is being certified. There are, I'm an engineer and there are engineers, all kinds of engineers out there and we just need, you keep people honest by looking over their shoulder.
All right, let, let's keep rocking, we're not going to stop this tonight. This is just an idea to bring it in-house as opposed to using the county for it. So other options to consider that we need to do some work on, increasing rec department programming fees. You know, there are some where we're right in line, there are some where we're low. This is not one that's going to move the needle by any stretch, but, um, maybe worth a dust off and kind of seeing where we are from a competitive standpoint. Increasing parking fees, this next one's Desiree's, implement dog license fees, just kidding, those are, these are just ideas.
Putting everything on the table.
Yeah, and certainly to continue pursuing grant opportunities. You know, we use an outside, a contractor right now to do grant work for us and that's on the front end. And really the worst part of grants is on the back end when you have to do all the reporting and such. So, um, we've, we've picked up a lot of money that way, but we could certainly be more aggressive, Blair.
Where are we with the parking vendor?
Mike.
Where are we with the parking vendor?
They took, took over March first.
Okay.
It's happening.
Cause I saw their, the new tickets were red. So I think it may be because we're talking about revenue, whether it's, it's not necessarily today, but we need to talk, start talking about charging for parking. Cause that's a huge drain with the city, what we're doing right now. And it could be re, it could be reconfigured obviously and that could be a revenue source, you know, an offset with police, fire, maintenance, et cetera, that we charge right, or that we pay right now.
You're talking about new, new areas, Blair, or?
No, like all the Palm Boulevard.
Yeah, new, new, new sections of pay.
Yeah.
New areas of paid parking, yeah.
Yeah.
John?
Can I, can I just maybe frame, uh, I mean, I think it's important for us to understand the opportunities of each of these and over the five-year period, what the, you know, what we can get in revenue. But in my mind, to frame the, the issue we're looking at here is our current forecasted fund balances, and I'm just talking about governmental funds, is going to forecast in about thirty-four million.
What page are you on, John?
Page eight. Thirty-four million. And if I look at and I count for the negative, uh, numbers, it looks like in twenty-nine, we're forecasted to be at about ten million. So that's a twenty-four million dollar gap over the five-year period that if we wanted to keep these fund balances at the current levels, we're going to have to come up with. Uh, which is a pretty sizable number. And realizing that may not be where we want to keep them. We may have grants and other things that come through, so it's not exactly a sizable number, even if you account for, for all those unknowns. And I, you know, I know we have, and maybe there are some other parts, I don't, I don't know what to, you have to present here. But certainly there's also in, things to look at in terms of spending, uh, not just the revenue side. And if there's, you know, opportunities, well.
Like this.
But my, my whole point, it may be a combination of things, whereas we're talking about a very sizable number, uh, that, you know, in a current, in my current opinion is it's unsustainable to keep going like we're going without doing something.
Yeah, and I don't disagree at all. Yeah, and Jimmy could certainly provide some more perspective on this. You know, we're sitting right now with forty-five million rough numbers in reserves, which is completely unprecedented for the city. Some of that's grant money, some of that's state budget money, some of it's ARPA. I mean, there are pieces to explain some of it. So John, I think you're, I hear you, do, do not disagree at all. You know, it's just, it's kind of like our revenue years of twenty-two, twenty-three. I mean, we're coming off of record numbers, which is also a bit of a concern, which is why we have the revenue decked where it is from an assumption standpoint. You know, and it's been nice to have these fund balances and we'll probably collect close to two million dollars in interest this year.
Right.
But that has not always been the case by any stretch. And you know, what we're projecting out for future forecast years, and Jimmy, again, you can speak to this, that's really more in line with historical reserves than what we've been fortunate enough to have over the last couple of years. I, I do, I don't disagree, John, with you at all, cause it's somewhere these lines are going to cross, cause we keep adding staff. We've done two, in the last three years, we've done two pretty significant wage adjustments. You know, we, we're keeping, Scott, to your point earlier, we're keeping our general fund at about, you know, a three to five million dollar number somewhere. I mean, somewhere the lines cross without a doubt, that we're going to have to do something.
I think we have to consider also the, um, I mean, that twenty-four million dollar number is just until twenty-nine. That, yeah, I'm, I'm as concerned about the traject- trajectory, trajectory that we are on right now too. It, um, it does, just indicates that, and we haven't even gotten into, you know, we're focusing on the next fiscal year. But I think if we took a little bit sharper pencil to the out years, we might find that the numbers that are estimated in there might need to go up. You know, if our, if we keep seeing these healthcare increases and our insurance increases, I don't think we're necessarily forecasting those trends in some of the outer years. And I think like even in the beach renourishment, after the big renourishment, we don't have anything assumed in there. So the twenty-four mil, you know, the long story short, I think the twenty-four million dollar number is the four-year stretch here, four, five-year stretch. But the trajectory is something that we're going to have to address to ensure that we've got coverage going out.
So John, to your point, next item, you know, we looked at the revenue potential, things to consider on the expense side. If you go back to the pie chart early on about where the money goes and how much is kind of fixed cost, if you will, there's, year, year over year, there's not a whole lot of discretionary spending other than, you know, projects or other things that we want to put on the table. But one of the items is insurance for the city-owned properties. I think our number, Deborah, if I remember right, this year all in is around seven hundred thousand dollars for our insurance. You know, I think easy low hanging fruit is to significantly increase our premium costs, given our cash reserve situation. I think there are other alternatives we make and look at. Right now, we use the MEASC, um, coverage, can't remember what, smurf, smurf? Murph?
Smurf, smurf.
So I think there are other things we can look at there. Again, not, I mean, the, the cost today is seven hundred thousand, so we're not talking about, you know, things that are really going to move the needle out in future years. But cumulatively, could be a decent number. As always, for, as we enter twenty-five, and Scott, to your point, this is really just focused on the next twelve months of our next fiscal year, you know, to really hold the line on discretionary spending until we can verify where our revenues are going to come in. That's just kind of basic, basic budgeting and, and what we do typically, cause we don't do any projects during July, August, September, typically during season. So it kind of takes care of itself. Reevaluating kind of goes with that second bullet, um, you know, the timing or the scope of any key budget initiatives. There are a few that are some pretty big ticket items that we could limp along potentially. It's going to need to be an expense and I think primarily think about city hall, uh, the renovation that we've got in the budget right now for that. That's a very big ticket item. You know, we're really completely out of space here, we're completely out of space in the public safety building. So we're going to have to do something at some point, but you know, is it a four million dollar project? Maybe, maybe not, but just any, again, ideas to think about as we're walking forward. And then again, when we looked at the fund balances bar charts, I made the comment that everything we're doing, we're paying cash for. So any trucks, uh, fire trucks coming out in the future, garbage trucks in the public works department, other big ticket items, we're looking at paying cash for everything right now. And you'll recall, some of you will recall, and right after COVID, uh, you know, drainage phase three, I guess, and Marina docks, we took on some debt. And those are at, you know, one and a half to two percent interest rates. I wish we could go back and get a little bit more of that. Those, those bad bankers want to get paid, Blair, you know how they work. Just like, just like a lawyer. So I think, I think, John and Scott, to y'all's point about future years, you know, I think of some assumptions we can, and we've got significant room in our debt levels that we could take on if we were so inclined, but I think some of the bigger ticket items coming, um, I think it's, I think it's worth looking at, put in some debt, um, on our books.
This may be something to consider, but with our, um, and you know, we've done everything for, I think for the right reasons for the staff and all. But with our run rates, the way they are, if they're not presented in a different fashion here, um, you know, are the financial institutions going to have a little bit more pause? If we see our expenses increasing without our revenue line. I think we're going to have to address that revenue line pretty hard in order to make a banker comfortable if our expenses are, you know, going up as quick as they are. We're just not, we're not going to have the, the luxury perhaps of the, uh, financial profile we've had in prior years.
Well, I guess the one thing that I've always said was that the capital expenditures are different from the operating, that, the recurring expenses year to year. And, um, I feel comfortable as long as we can, we, we see a, a good line going forward with operating expenses. That we can, we can use discretion to determine which cap, how much capital funding, uh, spending we can do every year on projects. And it'll be, and if we start, um, go, issuing debt for some of that, then I think we'll have a better way to manage that. It's pretty common with most municipalities in the way they do business.
Yeah, I, I think you saw our debt service, I think it was four percent of our budget number, I think, if I remember right. You know, when you talk to other cities, kind of Jan, to your point, council people, mayors, administrators, I mean, we are definitely at the low end from a debt service level. You know, we had the rec center came off last year in twenty-six, we've got another piece of debt coming off. In twenty-eight, we've got another piece of debt coming off. So that's why I get pretty comfortable pretty quickly with taking on some debt, if we can get favorable rates and terms and such. And Scott, to your point, I, we, we've, we've got a great debt rating right now and we need to keep that for sure. But, um, you know, with what we have rolling off in the next two fiscal years, three fiscal years, I guess, um, I would feel very comfortable with city taking on some debt and not using our cash reserves. Other comments or thoughts?
Sky's not falling.
There's no clouds today, Jimmy. It's totally blue sky today.
I've heard this, this story many times before. We'll work it out. It's, uh, we need to, we haven't even talked, talked about expenditures yet. And one thing we haven't heard from, I don't know when that's going to happen, is what is the county going to do? You know, are they going to increase our mileage? So we have to be really careful. We have to keep that in mind before we tell them what we're going to do. And they need to know pretty much in May, don't they?
I think so.
For the county.
Yeah. So that's, that's the majority of our tax bills.
And I know, I think there was already rumblings about another school bond tax, if I remember right, I don't know if it's for this coming fiscal year or not. Go ahead, Desiree.
You know, I just, to the, making the point, we don't, we don't get any of that, you know, from the county perspective.
But our residents are.
Our residents, yeah, the residents would pay for it, but it wouldn't be in a, an additional revenue source to the city from that perspective.
No, I'm just saying our tax bills will go up.
That's right.
The residents' tax bills will go up.
True.
And we haven't, we, we can't address that just yet, but we need to keep that in mind before we make final decisions about what we're going to do. And we haven't, we haven't even talked about expenditures. I could like, I've gone through all this and got a lot of things to talk about on expenditure side.
Well, look at our first bullet here, additional projects or initiatives to consider. That's what we're ready to hear from anybody. Let me just run through the timeline real quick on what we'll do. So at the April regular workshop, we'll look at draft two based on some of this commentary and feedback. First reading we're shooting for at the April council meeting. In the public hearing and second reading at the May council meeting so that we can have an extra month, if you will, if something shakes. We just need to have it ratified no later than June thirtieth for our fiscal year to start on July first. So that's kind of the next few months, um, from a timing standpoint. But again, let's back up to additional projects or initiatives to con- to consider or other ideas of any kind, Jimmy, whether it's revenue or expense.
No more projects.
No more projects?
No more projects or initiatives to consider.
I love projects.
Right now, I mean, I have questions about some that, that are in this. Right now, I mean, I have questions about some that are in this first draft.
Fire away, that's why we're here.
So, you know, City Hall, $2 million. You got $500,000 in new playground equipment. I think I saw in here, a small example, $15,000 for the rec department for, I think they said it was some sort of machine to help them change the light bulbs up really high.
A lift?
Lift.
A lift, you know, I think $15,000 for that, that's, I mean, I could be here quite a while, but I'm not here to take over conversation, I'm here to listen to everybody else. But I have all those things that I think we could postpone or get rid of altogether. That's going to affect, directly affect these fund balances.
And, you know, in the key budget initiatives document, we try to just select those big-ticket items. If there's anything that's not included here, we can certainly, you know, speak about them. I think we were just looking at those that have a higher impact to our budget and get feedback from council on timing, scope. You know, there are things that are.
Yeah, well, right here, those two things right there, I mean, just, they need some serious discussion about a $4 million City Hall project spread over two years, and then new playground equipment. All new playground equipment for $500,000, that's $2.5 million right off the bat. I mean, that took me about 20 seconds.
But what do you do with City Hall, Jimmy? I mean, we are completely out of space in a 40-plus-year-old building.
Well, talk to some really good design architects, see what other alternatives we have. Maybe an auxiliary building where the parking lot is now, where it used to be the old City Hall. The old City Hall was much smaller than this room. It had the mayor's office and the city administrator and everybody, of course, you know, that could go on forever. I'm not saying we'd do that, but maybe put some services in another building that doesn't have a $4 million price tag on it at this point.
Yeah, and I think to, Elizabeth, I'll come back to you in just a second, to that point, you know, we've had a design firm getting, making sure the bones were good, looking at other land the city owns.
We had two. We had two.
So the city engaged an architect firm and a contractor to do an assessment of this current building and provide to us a couple, several options. So this $4 million is really a placeholder. We have not yet, and that'll be brought up to council to understand what options we have with renovating our existing building, what that gives us. Are there any other options that we need to consider? Is it more cost-effective to tear and build from scratch or repair? So that's in the process now.
Okay, see, the key word there is placeholder.
Yes, sir.
We first started this discussion, it was just, you know, we're going to spend all this money, every single penny of it's going to be spent. We're going to reduce our fund balances down to nothing. And there's a lot of assumptions that are being made in this first draft that should not be considered to be the end product, not by far.
Absolutely. I mean, everything's a placeholder, other than when you look at our expense numbers, you know, wages, fringes, temp labor, 41%, I mean, there's some fixed, obviously.
Right, right. We can't do anything about that, insurance costs going up, got to take care of our employees, but there's other things to consider.
I will say it is an educated, very educated guess, you know, talking to the engineers, cost per square foot, you know, in a building. So that's where we got to the $4 million. But, you know, is it $4 million? How do you compare that to, we stay in this building and the roof needs to be replaced, the elevator needs to be replaced, you know, there's still a lot of things that need to happen to this building that are going to cost a lot of money, and we felt like that would be the perfect opportunity to evaluate, how do we do it in the best, you know, cost-effective way, considering that we are, we need more space as well.
How much more space?
A couple offices, I mean, we just need.
Couple offices.
We fill this room up quite often.
Yes, so I mean, again, I don't think we need to solve City Hall, but it is, it is, there are expenses that need to be considered for this building if we want to stay here.
I understand.
And I think it's over a million.
The engineers that came and talked to us told us that, I mean, this building was built as a residential structure on a shoestring budget. It was not intended to last. The building envelope is pretty much done, the HVAC, the roof, I mean, you get to the point where you're throwing good money after bad.
We'll have to see. I'm just saying, I'm not ready to sign up for $4 million tonight.
And nobody's asking you to.
No.
Yeah, it's just a number to put in there. We got to do something. And that's just one of our bigger-ticket items for sure at $4 million, Jimmy, to your point. You know, there's drainage, I mean, there's a number of things in there that, again, everything on here is just ink on a page right now. I mean, it's coming back to council for any expenditures that we have, Elizabeth.
Thank you. All right, so I'm making this comment with no understanding at all about how it is, staff functions. But have we explored remote work at all to solve for maybe space issues? Because I know a lot of, I mean, our law firm has gone to remote work. I mean, it takes kind of a special individual and perhaps a certain skill, you know, I mean, somebody that doesn't have to be here all the time or at all, frankly.
I mean, the hard part, you know, because I mean, I sit here quite a bit, the amount of foot traffic that walks in this building, residents, guests, tourists, I can't handle that from my living room. There's a fair amount that comes in here. I'd be, I'd be real.
I guess my point is, are we so cross-trained that there's no availability for somebody? Like, is our code enforcement, does he need an office here? Is he in his truck all the time? Or, like, I just don't, I don't know if anybody's ever thought about that everybody doesn't have to be under this roof.
Yeah, and that's a good example. They're not under this roof. They share an office in the public safety building today. Jan?
Question. There's $2 million that we're assuming is in next year's budget for City Hall, in the budget.
Two years.
$2 million, one year, $2 million, yes. We're paying cash for the building? Aren't we going to? That's something that I definitely think, I mean, nobody pays cash for their house. Aren't we going to mortgage, issue debt for that?
That's the conversation, Jan. I just said we're paying cash for everything.
Yeah, so I mean, for that one, I think that's, that to me says that we've got $2 million more in this budget. That shouldn't be $2 million. It should be whatever fraction of that is if you amortize it over the life of the future building. If, it really changes the face of our budget if that's, if that's the way we're showing it now, everything cash up front.
Well, a part of that is the price of money, too. The money's not cheap anymore.
Yeah, but nobody pays cash up front, I mean.
Yeah, Jimmy, I wish we could get some of that 1.5%, 2% money. You got some?
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, for everybody's benefit, everything that sits in fiscal '25 or future years, we're paying cash for. There are multiple opportunities to look at debt servicing, for sure. That would significantly change to John and Scott's comment, significantly change your out years from a fund balance standpoint. Scott?
I mean, one way to go about the budgeting process is to figure out what do we want, what's our target that we're trying to shoot for? I mean, if we have specific fund balances that we're trying to target, like, I mean, historically, we've been in that 33 range across all the portfolio, and we've got some capital projects that we know are behind us or in front of us. I think the task for us is to find out what, where do we feel comfortable in our cap structure, capital structure? And then basically, we say what's affordable and what's not. And we've got fixed costs that we know of, our team's fixed costs and the others. I mean, those should be, I think, very clearly identified, and the rest falls below the line and is considered discretionary. I think, Jimmy, to your point, those items that you were talking about. And those are the ones where we can go through quite quickly and say, if we know what our target capital structure is and fund balance targets are, either finance, don't finance, and we can draw the line.
Yeah, I don't know, Jimmy, again, you would have the historical view of this. Disaster, well, general fund, we tried to keep pretty steady. Disaster recovery, we've got it up to $3.5 million-ish right now. I mean, again, that's pretty, that's much higher than it has been in prior years. I don't know, or Desiree, I don't know that there's any policy stated anywhere for targets that we have, is there?
For the general fund, there is a, yeah, council passed a resolution years ago, before my time certainly. I'm trying to remember.
It's right at $5 million right now.
Yeah, it's a percentage of our fixed costs essentially, but not, we don't have a policy, council has never, for the other funds. Not saying we should.
It was always, you know, we transfer enough money for capital and stuff, and it was like, oh, by the way, let's put some money in disaster recovery. Some years we did, but most years, some years we did like 50, some years, lately we've been doing over 100.
To get it to the 3.5% current number?
Yeah, but that's just, we didn't have that when Hugo hit. And we were kind of like, really on a shoestring, trying to survive. And it's mainly, it's trying to let the residents know that we do understand the possibility of that happening, and we hope it never does. But if it does, we can hit the ground running, we don't have to wait for FEMA.
Yeah, and leaving that there where it is, it's self-funding, I mean, the forecast now is to self-fund just through interest additions, not through any transfers or anything.
Correct.
So that's how it grows.
Yeah, we don't forecast the positive net result being distributed to other funds other than the capital projects.
It will, it's just a matter of time.
But we, but council has historically done that at the end of the year before the audit. The audit is finalized, and as Jimmy indicated, historically, the city has, council has voted to pass a portion of that to the disaster recovery fund.
Now, the pre-COVID, and I'm just making this up right now, but the pre-COVID fund balances look like they were totaling around $33 million, 32, 33, which is about where we are now. You know, if we were to try to model something out over the next few years to get us to, or to maintain those, I think the question is, how do we get there?
Well, I guess the other part of that, though, is how much of that are encumbered funds for projects that are underway? And how much of it is really available reserves?
Well, we look at that every month in the financial sheets. Yeah, the $45 million gets down to 24ish pretty quick.
You've got that new schedule, which is very helpful.
So what do we want to keep that available reserve at, not so much what the fund balance is? That'll fluctuate depending upon how many capital projects we have going.
When you say $45 million, are you including the Marina in that?
No, our last workshop, I think total cash is about $45 million. And I think, I think we're projecting to end the year.
42, yeah, it's, we're budgeted to be, well, 41.6 is where the budget is.
We're about $45.
Which includes the Marina, though, at a, in their asset, not a cash position, but their asset base. I mean, if you look at really cash, you're really talking about $34 million. Maybe $2 million higher than that. There's $2 million of cash in the Marina as well, so it may be 36. But I, I do, I guess to me, either we do something as Scott suggested, or we go in here and we identify in these outer years how we're going to do. I don't feel comfortable with the open prayer saying that, you know, yeah, the sky's not falling, never has, and won't now, because I think, to me, we ought to figure out what this looks like now, put it down on paper, and it shows where we want to end up as opposed to waiting until we have a crisis. So I think there's some work that has to go into it personally, to figure out whether we want to, what we want to cut, what we want to increase in revenues, what we want to put debt service on, and what the impact of that service is at current rates, and go through and do a little more homework than where we have, where it sits right now.
Is that something we can do in two more meetings, or should we contemplate maybe a brief revival of ways and means? I mean, for some special, I mean, it seems like we might have a little more work here if we, depending on what path we take tonight, I don't know.
I mean, the work will be done outside of the, whatever we do next, a workshop, another workshop. I mean, this is kind of ways and means right here, actually.
I mean, this is very high level. I mean, everything we're talking about is going to take a while.
And we need to provide some direction as to what we want either taken out or put back in. I think that would help Deborah and Desiree and the crew here. I think we've got to have some maybe hard conversations about, you've got a great list here, I think, in your presentation, but we need to say, yep, bake that in, see what it looks like, or take this out. You know, if we're going to say defer the, you know, defer the building renovations for another year or two until we get our, you know, comfort levels with everything, or we look at the option of financing, and I think we can look at different scenarios. But we've got to give these folks guidance.
I would ask that our parking vendor tell us what other beach communities are charging for parking and what they think we could charge for parking. I think we're low, according to what I've seen. And that could be a pretty good source of income to offset the costs that are associated with this free parking. But they ought to at least tell us what they think they could do on the island and what that would look like. I know Gulf Myrtle Beach, they actually are buying property to charge for parking as a profit center. There is no free parking in Gulf Myrtle Beach. Myrtle Beach is the same, but it goes all the way down the coast. So I think we're way behind on the whole process of parking and how you fund the cost of parking.
I think what we could do is bring it to the public safety committee and have the public safety committee look at that. That's, yeah, parking is a great source of revenue.
And, you know, the company has been operating for 19 days, you know, the goal.
Oh, that's plenty of time.
The goal, you know, in my mind, was to get them through the season, for them to have a full understanding of what, you know, what, in terms of parking, what we're working with here, and for them to come at the end of the season to council with a recommendation, whether it's changing fees, adding more parking, you know, to the paid parking program and such. So certainly, we can accelerate that, but I would advise against making changes during the middle of the season. So that whatever we do, we would be working towards next year, next season, to make sure that we roll it out in the right way.
Where was the cost side of that equation in the, or did we just assume we're going to net the same amount of money?
So our revenue assumptions is we stay flat compared to last year. So we know that we will increase our revenues from citations and just revenue overall with parking. We believe that that increase will offset the cost of the management of that program. So we'll know as, you know, the next couple of months roll in, how we're doing in that.
I was looking for their percentage in there somewhere.
76, 24. So they keep 24% of all revenues, including citations. They are also pursuing everybody that has received a ticket in the past that has not paid. We believe there's hundreds of thousands of dollars associated with that.
I was just trying to find out where the 24% is in the budget. I couldn't, I didn't know where it was.
So it's not. We, we, we cut costs, we cut all the costs associated with us covering the program. So there's a net gain there, and then our revenues are forecasting them to stay flat, yes.
A problem I see with, like, taking any consideration of this budget on working at any additions to parking that Blair has suggested, that we're going to affect four months of prime beach traffic. That, you know, we already see, it's March, and it's crowded, it's March, April, May, and June. You know, that we're making decisions on in this budget process, it's going to affect this budget. And so it really puts us behind the eight ball because we only have like, what, another four months after that in the '26 budget.
Well, you can increase it any time.
I'm, I was thinking, government moves slowly, and we get, we're working on this now so that we have it in place for next season. I didn't expect us to implement something in a month.
Absolutely. I'm not talking about charging the parking tomorrow, but they could very simply tell us, based upon your footprint, this is what we would suggest that you do, you know, whenever, and this is how much revenue that would generate. They could do that very simply based upon what they're doing in other beaches. I would think.
Yeah, I would think so, too. So Scott, I think to your point, my personal opinion, and we can go whichever way you guys want to go, I would instruct our staff to, for our bigger-ticket items, let's look at taking on debt and see what that does to our funds as a first next step.
So keep everything in and fund it through financing?
Well, you just see what, see what.
Beachy renourishment as well, or the capital projects?
Capital projects.
Well, I mean, then you can pick and choose which ones we want to take debt and which ones we want to maybe get rid of or keep in, or, you know, it gives us, it just gives us the opportunity to see it as a, what, you know, it's not, we're not saying that we would go with that on every one, it's just, it would show how it would change the budget. I think that would be helpful.
I mean, the obvious one, of course, is City Hall.
Well, you got City Hall, you have some fire trucks out there in the future. Garage trucks in the future.
I mean, the playground stuff would be big.
You got some big ticket items coming.
Yeah, the life, life, whatever, whatever, something has a lifespan.
Yeah, John, where were you going?
No, I, I mean, I don't have a, just to be clear, the, the capital projects, not the, the beach re-nourishment.
Right.
Piece of it, yeah.
I think there's, you know, still some more work at the beach ad hoc committee that needs to happen that could, that's going to touch on the funding side.
So anything above what level, I mean, some level doesn't make sense to go off for debt on, so, but certainly above, above, I would say a million dollars or so.
That's where my head was going.
You, you'd probably want to do something with debt.
I mean, again, just as kind of a first next step to see what that would do to our fund balances. I think it's going to paint a very different picture personally. Jimmy?
I'd like to see us go back to the old school way. Before COVID, Councilmember Buchanan introduced a concept of setting aside money for these big ticket items ahead of time. And in those days, we had the funds to do that. So when it came time for a fire truck or whatever, I had talked to the chief of what, what actually happened. But I do know we were setting aside money in the budget for future capital needs. And I'd like to see us get back to that position, whatever that would take. If we're, when we're talking about a five and 10-year plan. So we don't have to be talking about financing a two and a half million dollar fire truck or paying cash for one. We did it before.
I, I think from the list of projects that we have, you know, the City Hall renovation, expansion, you know, whatever we end up doing at that point is a candidate for us, just showing it as a, as a debt issue. You know, do we need to resurface Ocean Boulevard this year? Maybe not. So that, that would be something that we could defer. The access control system with the public safety building, it is old and any, anytime we have to replace parts, we can't find them. So that, I do see that as a critical item that, that I would, I would recommend that we keep. The training room IT upgrades, that may be something that, you know, we could maybe limp along for the next year or so. But, you know, you're looking at 30, $35,000. The drone, it's something I think we, we definitely need. Rescue boat, if we get a grant, that would be a, a, a great cost share opportunity to get, to have our fire department better equipped for water rescues. You know, the Waterway Boulevard elevation project, that's one that we're waiting on FEMA to announce a grant that would cover a, a, a good chunk of that. The other portion of that project could be covered by the ARP funds that we have, we still have on hand or the additional state budget allocations we've received or the, we've received last year. Phase five, we're moving that to FY26, just in terms of bandwidth and timing. We don't believe we'll be ready for construction. So that, that's a change that you're seeing today compared to when we looked at the 10-year capital plan in the Public Services and Facilities Committee. We adjusted that timeline accordingly and, and, and budgeted a portion this year and the other one. Mini excavator for stormwater maintenance, what we've been doing this year is renting it when we need to. We can go back and do that again for, for another year, may not be as necessary. You know, the playground equipment and rubber pour in place for the recreation department, you know, it's, it's an old piece of equipment. Again, it's getting harder to get pieces to replace those that are broken, but maybe something that we can defer for a year. Maybe look for grant opportunities for that or phase it out over a couple of years. Painting the building, you know, we believe it, it's necessary. The floor at High Tide Room, we, I, I do see that as a, as a critical expenditure, something that we need. You know, we talked about the beach maintenance, the what? Yeah, the floor is buckling in the, in the recreation department. Let's see, the public green space and parking lot reconfiguration of the Marina. That makes, you know, that assumes a lot of arrangements are finalized between the tenant and, and the city. May, may not happen. T-Dock repairs, something that the city is deferring a portion of from this year to next year, just because of timing. We budgeted $200,000 this year, only spending 30,000, $34,000 this year. So the other portion would, would hit the, the next budget, budget year. So those are really the big ones. We can certainly go through line by line if there's any small additions to the budget that, that we can, we want to reconsider, but there's nothing that different. I mean.
Can I, can I ask a question, Desiree?
Hey, John, let me get Elizabeth real quick. She's kind of been waiting.
You mentioned the High Tide Room floor replacement, that's $32,000. But, and earlier in the meeting, you mentioned that we'd looked around at some other municipalities and maybe how they handle fees, I guess, maybe for, is there, is there a way for them to help the recreation department to make some adjustments within their fee structure that's more in line with surrounding communities to kind of help us keep them going? I mean, I don't know if it's $32,000. I don't know what that would.
Yeah, that was one of the items.
I mean, I, are we going to?
Yes, the, the recreation, yeah, the recreation staff carry his pull together all the, all of the programming that is offered by the recreation department and what's free, what we charge, how much we charge and how that compares to like recreation departments or just classes in the market. And there's some opportunity there. I was surprised we were not that off compared to others in, in many of our programming. But there are some opportunities, particularly when you look at summer camp and programming like that. So yes, we've, we've, we've already started that process.
Is that something we'll see in this process that we're going through, like next month in April or whatever?
Our plan was to present it to the Public Services and Facilities to bring it to the committee level for discussion.
So what do we do? Kind of accomplish, we're going to give them that advice or?
I would love that, Jimmy.
Just having conversation.
One thing, like the Waterway Boulevard projects, a million and a half dollars, you got all a million and a half dollars of expenditures in there, but we're expecting the grant. I would say that something like that would be contingent on us getting the grant. So we should take the, put the grant money in as a budgeted item and only have our piece of that in there. But realizing it'd be contingent on us getting the grant for us to do the project.
So that would be a different sort of approach to that project? Last year, council wanted to make sure that it, that the funds were available in the event that we did not get the grant.
Well, I think budget wise, we should put it in there saying that we, we expect the grant. It's contingent on us getting the grant. If we don't get the grant, then it'd be another council decision, whether we go forward with it or not.
So make the assumption that, that we're getting the grant and we just budget the city portion.
That's right.
Or another way to do it is.
Kind of like, I'm sorry, kind of what we're dealing with a rescue boat. We're only budgeting 300.
It's, what I'm looking at is, is you've got, the one thing in, you need to eliminate things like repainting the, the building, the room, $32,000. That's a maintenance item. We're talking about capital projects here is what I'm looking at. That can be funded. Yeah, it's, it just should be, but we're talking about different ways of handling capital projects, I think. Anything over a million dollars automatically should assume that we're going to finance them somehow. We're not going to pay, you know, amortize them over the life of the project. You know, how long is, is that fire truck going to last and just amortize it over? For something like Waterway Boulevard, we can, we can do that, there are two different ways to do it. The one we do now, which is put the full price in there, assume, but we're assuming that there's going to be money available through a grant in the future. Well, another way to deal with it is to take it and finance the project and amortize it over the life of the project. So what is it going to cost us the first year if we have to finance it? If we get the, if we get the grant, we don't have to finance, but it's, it's a reasonable number in our budget because we know it's not going to, we don't have to pay it all upfront. So that's the kind of thing I'm thinking of, that we can, there's, and this is not my special, I mean, I, there are ways to do this that I think we need somebody with, with outside eyes or something to look at it, to give us an idea of how we can do it.
We don't need somebody outside. We can figure that. This is easy stuff, Jan. We just need to decide are we paying cash or are we going to?
Yeah, I, I, I think we ought to do that. I think we ought to do that with things like Waterway. I think we ought to go through anything over a million dollars, put in some fin, debt financing. Quantify those lists of, of revenue generating and the expense items that could be cut. And then let's come back together and figure out where we are after we, after we do those things.
Totally agree. So Jimmy, to your question, I think, I think that's the direction to staff. Again, I think those few items are going to make a significant difference on our out year or so. I think, I think that's our first shot at it, to take the next step.
So as far as it's amortizing the cost of these projects, are we going to have a cutoff? Are we going to be specific tonight about the projects we'd like staff to look at?
One million and over.
What, that's our criteria?
For financing.
And a cap of how many million? I mean, we've got projects rolling in next year and the year after. What's our cap on our debt? We got to, we got to pick a cap for those folks too. Because it's going to impact us, I'm sorry, it's going to impact us in the subsequent years because of the cap and on our fund balances the same way if we don't finance.
Correct. The, the cap for issuing that for FY25 is 14 million and that just continues to grow. So a lot of our debt issues are.
Are coming off.
Are coming off.
Some of it got significant room to.
Yeah.
But I, but again, I don't, we're not deciding to take on debt for any of these projects. We're asking to see what it would look like. Yeah, it's not like we're saying, oh, everything that's worth a million dollars or more, we're going to take on debt for it and we're just automatically going to do it. This is just a way to.
We're just going to model it out. Yep.
Well, and I think, I think Scott made the point earlier that, you know, when we go through back to the committees, I would like a sort of a closer look and a, and a, and a, a more detailed analysis of our 10-year capital plan. You know, there's a lot of things, not a lot, there's a few things that we have included over time, like wish list items, you know, for a long time we had the pool, they'll remember, the pool at the recreation center. And we kind of had a conversation, it's okay, that's not something we're going to pursue. So let's, let's say get out of our 10-year capital plan is, and I'm, I'm not picking on the recreation department. I'm just, you know, following that example, you know, there's been conversations about expanding and having a, a new gym. So the 10-year capital makes assumptions about the extension of, of the recreation building. Is, does this council have appetite for that? Because that's been included in our 10-year capital plan. It's impacting our fund balance and our forecast if we're, if, if there is no desire to do that. It's a.
Could we give you some direction that says call that 10-year capital plan to the needs to have and, and just omit the wants to have or would like to haves?
Sure.
That would, that might, you know, that we might find that's a few million dollars in there over the next several years that, you know, just, just put it down to the essentials that we absolutely can do without. And then we can always address the others on a, if we have the money basis.
You can always add things in, right?
Say it again, Kate.
You can always add things in as, as they come up.
Don't you think that the 10-year capital plan is, is always a work in progress? I mean, two years from now, we might be electing some real swimming pool enthusiasts. You know, things change.
That is true. That, that's true.
And I guess Desiree, the work that, I mean, that's why it's so critical in January and February that we're looking at the 10-year capital plan at the committee level where you can spend more time than we can in here tonight. I mean, was the focus fiscal '25 and out, or was it really fiscal '25 for the most part?
It was mostly the FY25 requests and what changed from, or request from FY20 to FY25.
There will be another round of budget, I mean, committee meetings before the April council workshop. So I think I would ask council members or committee members to dig deeper on the 10-year capital plan. I mean, that's what's driving the whole model, I mean, the whole thing. And that's what's sitting out there as far as, you know, the fire trucks, the garbage trucks, the other big rec center department. I mean, there are other, some big ticket items sitting out in future years, Scott, to your point, that may be a nice to have, maybe could push a year or two or here, but I mean, that, that is exactly what's driving the whole model. So we need to spend more time on the 10-year capital plan, maybe.
Yeah, I think that you do, if you go back three to five years and look at 10-year capital plan, you wouldn't recognize it today.
As far as what really happened.
Right.
Go ahead, Desiree.
No, I think that now that everybody has had a copy of the entire budget, you know, when we went through each committee, we, we're not seeing the budget in its entirety. It was just by department, by fund. Then maybe now we all have a better understanding of what's included, what's forecasted, and we can have another conversation about the nice, the, what the nicer need to haves, not only for FY25, so that we're not just focusing on, again, these big ticket items. If there's anything else in the budget that we need to reevaluate because of what we're seeing, you know, the impact on particularly the next five years.
And that becomes a recommendation out of whatever committee's dealing with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Do we also want to bake in some of the revenue assumptions, just to see what they look like? To what this is going to do to our out years? Or at least, I don't know, maybe we get some different scenarios. If we've got, if we think that's, you know, mileage increases $700,000, that's going to take us, that's 700 every year, plus whatever we can do going forward.
So do we want, do you all want us to model what the revenue?
I think we ought to at least model out what these revenue opportunities are going to do for us. And I think we ought to see them in a quantifiable manner because, you know, we've still got the elephant on the page here with the beach re-nourishment. This is, that's not going to get cured by all these other exercises that I can see. And I don't know how we're going to finance a beach re-nourishment unless, and we're not Dare County and I don't think we can go it alone necessarily. So I, I'd like to see what the impacts potentially, you know, I don't know how you bake them into your model, but that way we can pull them in or take them out or whatever.
Yeah, Scott, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no, that's fine.
I, I would, I would, here's my preference. We can go with whichever way. I think option draft two finances what we can finance, anything over a million. Let's, let's take a look at that. Option 2A starts folding in some of these revenue numbers. Because I'm, I'm pretty convinced once we look at scrubbing the 10-year capital plan a little bit harder, finance what we can over a million, I think you're going to see a pretty significant difference in life in our fund balances. So let's, let's at least start there and then we'll do another draft along with it, Scott, and I'm not saying delaying it.
We'll see 2N, 2A at the same time.
Yes.
Plus, we, we'll have a real conversation about where we want to do these projects.
I mean, at committee level is where you're going to, before this April workshop. I mean, some of these revenue increase items are seriously nickels and dimes.
Right.
We'll fold them in, we'll fold them in, but it's, it's really nickels and dimes to a large extent.
Speaking of, one of the big things, the, the building, aren't we waiting on? Where are we on that? We're waiting on information, I, I believe.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it. They were here last week going through just additional assessment. I think mechanical people were here. So we are still waiting on just the full assessment and recommendations. And, and we've asked them for options and the cost of those different options. And that's what we, we hope to be bringing before this committee. Whether it's going to be ready in April, I don't know, but I can, we can definitely find out.
Whether that's going to be.
Or at least have in, for them to have a, maybe an, again, an educated guess of where we, where we sit based on the analysis they've done so far.
Yeah, it'd be awesome if we could get that before.
You may just want to include planning and design of the building for this year and push construction into the future.
That's how we have it.
That's how we have it.
In FY24. So the construction, it's in FY25 migrating to FY26.
Yeah, you're paying for the get ready this year and then Deborah, in the mic, please.
To answer Scott's question, it looks like, you asked about fund balances for the general fund. It looks like it's supposed to be 30% of revenue, of, of expenses, I'm sorry. So whatever expenses is.
I just noticed it was steady in your.
Yeah, and that's the only one, Scott and Deborah, to your point, that has specificity to it.
So back on the, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one question. Has there been any, any conversation or any attention to the possibility of looking at selling city assets? Specifically, one piece of property I'm talking about is back over here, the Old Will Bank's property. That we paid a million dollars for about 12 years ago. Is there any, any talk about, about that?
There's been talk about buying that other piece of property on the water, but not selling, but. Considerably put it on the table.
It's been sitting there. I mean, we're not using it, are we?
No, that's one of the options that the engineers are looking for, City Hall renovation, whether it's better for us to relocate to a different location, taking into consideration those two lots, consolidating it with Public Works and seeing what opportunities the city would have with this, with this lot here.
Interesting.
So that's, that's kind of part, part of the, part of the assessment. I would like to go back, I'm sorry, on the revenue increase. Are, are there any other ones that you would like to? I know Scott, you've mentioned wanting to have an idea of what the revenues each one would generate potentially. That's what we want to do with this, at this, at this level, just a, a very high level analysis of what they could yield.
Yeah, and I think like to Blair's point, the parking fees could be a real uplift. And, you know, I don't know if we want to even just put a P times Q on a, how many parking spots were paid parking at the current rates and see what that looks like in the out years, just to, just to have that number. and see what that looks like in the out years, just to, just to have that number.
I feel like our business license fees, I mean, we, we hit that every year, don't we? It feels like we do. I mean, I, I feel like we're pretty in line with, I mean, maybe we're not, but I, I feel like we're right there with everybody else. I wouldn't wanna get too high on that stuff.
Yeah, we, we are. We did that three, four years ago, recent, relatively recently. As short-term rental licenses were increased last year. Building permits is one that we haven't looked at in, in a few more years. And we've done an, an analysis and we're somewhat in line, lower than Kiowa and Sullivan's essentially. So there's an opportunity there, but we're not that far off, is what we're seeing.
So Desiree, I think to your question, the ones that are really gonna move the needle, Scott and John, do you guys comment too? I think you look at a property tax increase out on a future year, this tax purpose district, there's just more work that needs to happen there. Parking fees, I mean, those are the ones that are really gonna move the needle, in my opinion.
No dog licenses fees, Jimmy?
When is the, the next county reassessment?
Twen, next year.
And that's gonna be a huge bump in revenues without any millage increase.
Yeah, but they'll roll us back.
But, yeah, no.
But, but for a lot of houses on this island, it will.
Well, but you.
Not when it comes to us, it goes to the county.
We don't get any of it.
We don't get any of it.
Well, and when you do a reassessment, then you have to roll back your millage so that you're, you're not, you're not generating more. You can't, you can't generate more property tax revenue just by the reassessment. So if, if the assessed value goes up and our same.
So if it goes down, then we just push the millage right back up.
So that, but it's, it wouldn't impact FY twenty-five, it would impact FY twenty-six.
Yeah, it would increase our ability to borrow though, cause it would, our assessed value will go up. Right.
That, that's right.
Yeah, our limits would get higher.
And I think what I would recommend or suggest is if we're borrowing money, that the city, for a particular project, that we raise our debt service millage to cover that debt service. You know, once that is, when that, once that project is paid off, then that service, debt service millage goes, rolls back and goes away kinda like we did last year with the rec bond.
Definitely.
What about eight percent?
What, what's that eight, that number's eight percent or something?
For the debt service millage?
Yeah.
No, it's, um. Point three two, yeah.
What am I saying about eight percent?
So the eight percent, so eight percent of assessed value is our limit for borrowing. We can't borrow more than that, yes.
And that, that, that's where we have the fourteen million dollar room to do something.
Could you check one other relationship in the, on the budget assumption? And it, it's the, and I know it's not a real popular subject, but the, when you look at the beach re-nourishment fund, and that's that one percent, and I think we're getting about a million nine, I think, this year in actual, that would imply that we've got about a hundred and ninety million in rental revenues on the island, I think, if that's the way that works. And I think when we did our rental assessment, and that was actually off the business license, business licenses submitted, we heard about a hundred and thirty-seven million. So there seems to be a bit of a disconnect on what's, you know, maybe what's being submitted as far as, because it used to be self-reported revenues on our business license. I know when I submit my, you know, for my business license, it's the honor system. But it would seem like we might have a sixty million dollar disconnect on what's actually occurring as far as our ATAX generation versus what's being recorded on our business licenses. And maybe just take a look at that.
Yeah, certainly. And this will be the first renewal period where we're asking for all of this additional financial documentation of, of folks. So in the next few months, because the renewal period, the deadline is April thirtieth. So a lot of people are waiting until March and April to submit. So we will have a better understanding of some of what that difference would, would be.
Everybody go with next steps? Looking at a couple of, couple of different versions of the next budget item. Committees, again, asking you to roll up your sleeves pretty hard in your next committee meeting to look at out years on the ten-year capital plan, cause I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna have the ability to do some pretty good adjustments there personally. Desiree, Deborah, you don't feel like you have?
I might have to re-watch this back. Deborah has been taking good notes, but.
Thank you very much for all the work.
Deborah has been just fantastic. I just wanna tell you all that she's a great asset.
I agree. Jimmy, good with next steps?
Got your work cut out for you.
As far as what we're looking for as drafts?
I'm listening. Yep.
How much would we really get for dog licenses?
Say it again?
How much?
Couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean, nickels and dimes.
It's a big source for Sullivan's.
Is it really?
What else? Anything?
I don't wanna know.
There being no further business.
Much, much to adjourn.
Second.